I'd like to lead against to the flag of the United States of America and this is the Republican religious stance, the armation of our God in the prison of justice for all.
Everybody get the new agenda? Get a motion to, uh, to, a resolution to accept tonight's agenda.
Make that a motion.
That a motion in second all in favor.
Aye.
So carry. To recommend approval of minutes of August 20th, 2019. Everybody have a chance to read them?
I'll recommend the...
Oh, I have, I have one little correction there. It said, uh, we thank International Falls for the boards, the city of International Falls, we actually got them from the school of history.
Okay.
And...
Yeah.
Just give the correct... Three sixty school of history. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
No.
With that, if you can get a motion.
Recommend approval of the minute.
I'll second.
Got a recommendation, a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Uh, to review the list of claims for August 2019.
I've got one question on the Bowman construction, is that completely complete? Then we're not going to pay until it's complete?
That, that's correct. We, we still have money on the case.
Okay.
But we still, I guess just another payment, it's not the last payment.
And then I got one other question on the spruce up, there is two times of $700, is that?
Oh, that's a mistake, thank you.
Yeah, it's down at the bottom, it's, yeah, the third from the bottom, the fourth from the bottom, it's on there and then it's on again at the boat.
Okay, thank you.
That's the same.
Away. And then I had one more question, I know we had set aside money for rainier days, so that all falls under the budget on that?
Yes, yes.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
With those corrections, any, any others? Get a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation to, uh, to accept the claims for August 2019.
Second.
Recommendation, second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Review the financial statements for the general water sewer funds as of August 31st. Motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion to table them. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Recommend approval of the resolution 2019-08 to propose tax levy.
I got one question, is it smaller than last year?
Yes, the net tax capacity dropped by 6%. Um, last year's levy amount, um, was 244, 200...
240.
44,000 or 36%. So, I mean, the, um, the net tax capacity dropped because of reduction in the railroad valuation, which is set by the state and fluctuating.
Does that include our money we're going to get from the...
That's separate.
Is that separate?
That, that, yeah, it's going to be separate. And so, um, we did get news that we're going to fund the, um, small cities aid program, we're going to get 17,000, you know, any dollars. So, that sort of makes up the shortfall for...
So, do, do we have to have that in our levy or not?
No, it's not part of the levy, it'll be just...
That is separate.
Totally separate, yeah.
Okay.
For the odd inches, can you clarify what that 17,800 is for?
Um, the county is getting, uh, personal property tax, um, payments on the Great Northern Transmission Line that they're installing, um, bidet to wherever it goes. Um, and a portion of it, 25% of it is doled out to the, all the cities in the county except for High Falls.
And this part gets a little bit...
And this part gets a little bit less than the other cities do.
Remember, we had that group meeting in, in Big Falls and we were coming up with a formula to make it, so everybody's going to get the same level. I understand this is only a partial payment for the year 2019, so next year might even be a little more.
Next year might be a little bit more, right?
Yeah.
Todd was our representative on that and we had to present, uh, basically, uh, a plan of what we do with the extra tax dollars we got and we submitted some, some plans to them. And, uh, we were in agreement and I guess the other shit pretty much followed suit with our plans. And, uh, and they donated all the money to us, so we, again, thanked the county for that generous offer to us. That's a nice little chunk of change and depending on the tax formula, we probably expect some out here from that. So, we'll see how that plays out.
So, I, I, the number I put on the proposed tax levy of 235,000.
Did not include this.
Did not include that. Um, and obviously, we can always reduce it.
We can.
But we can't raise it, right?
Right.
So, we can, um, work with that number or we can, you know, reduce it later on, once we got, start dumping into the budget a little bit more.
Right.
So then we'll have to set, at this meeting or next meeting, we'll have to set our, tell the county what the date is of our budget meeting.
I, we can set that.
Yeah, we have...
We can set it next week if you, if you want to.
I think we have to have that set by November, don't we?
Have to have it set by the end of September.
September.
And it, and it can't be until after the 24th of November.
November, right.
So, we'll be working on that in the next couple meetings, so.
So, I'll recommend, uh, approval of the resolution 2019-08 proposed 2020 tax levy of 235,000.
I'll second. We got a recommendation, a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. A code of conduct and conflict interest policy.
When, um, in signing this grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources, one of the requirements was that we have a conflict of interest policy, so that's...
And this pretty much follows to the standard of the state, any means, yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
Same policy, yeah, so.
That's what we talked about.
Well, we had to sign that, say that perhaps.
Say, yeah.
So, we'll need a motion on that to decide that, though.
I'll make a motion or a recommendation to accept the code of content, conduct and conflict of interest policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Uh, next order of business would be to address to our, uh, statement, Jennifer, come forward. See, the statement looks great. Had a good month.
Was it all rainier days or did it spread out a little bit?
It was just...
They had quite a few activities going on.
We, we did have a lot going on on rainier days, but I think it was just a gradual incline as August went on. Um, I do think, trying to look back on the till from previous years, it was one of our record-breaking days. Um, I know the, the tiki bar, I had never seen that many sales go through. I've worked that tiki bar before, cleared almost $5,000 just outside that day, just at the outside bar.
Yeah, well, I know...
I think the weather was perfect.
There was a lot of activity going on.
And that was great, I think that really kept people around, you know, starting with pancake breakfast and then you had, you know, everything just kind of flowed right to the end.
Kind of set the pace with the pancake breakfast, we were a record too, so.
But, I mean, I think it was just the weather in general that day. I mean, it wasn't hot, it wasn't raining, there was no really a lot of weddings going on, we didn't lose a lot of people.
Well, there's no doubt we had a bigger turnout from on rainier days, obviously, that, whether it's the weather and whether we...
Right, it was just...
You know, all things said, everything went well, this included, and I guess it shows up here. You know, another great, another great month, that puts us about $9,000 ahead of last year, which is great. And, you know, we could, we had a few tough months last winter, we all got together, put our heads together, uh, turned things around, you forgot away from us, made your corrections. Whatever we did, worked a little harder, whatever we had to do, that's what it's working, so.
Yeah, my advisory board's going to meet again next week.
Is that the young advisory board?
Well, it's all ages, there's a lady in her 60s on it too, we tried to get all generations. Um, trying to really wrap our brains around now that we're going to hit our slow time with shack season, you know? So, we're going to meet next week and see what we can do, maybe some football specials or something, try to get people to still come out.
Think it just gives a good example of, you know, the status quo, sometimes you just kind of take things for granted, you have to work at them and keep working at them. And the first time you let up a little bit, things can go south on you a little bit, but the harder you work, the rewards show up, so. I, I think you just knuckle down, did a good job for us, and everything's working out fine, so great. Any other questions, where, what have we got planned for this coming up?
The pig roast is this weekend and we're also going to have...
When is that?
On Saturday.
Is it Saturday?
Yes.
I think the weather's supposed to be good this weekend, too.
It's supposed to be pretty decent. We also have, um, Lake of the Woods Brewing Company that's going to appear at the bar and they're going to be giving out free samples of their new beer that they have, um, made. So, there'll be a couple people...
Free beer?
Yes, free samples. And if you enjoy it, you can come to the muni and buy one on tap, because we'll have them on tap too.
We're going to start selling them.
Yes. Well, everybody in town, you know, over the summer said, what's your local brew? And that, you know, we don't really have anything unless Looney's wants to get a license to start selling it through bars. Lake of the Woods was the closest we could get, so, that's just, you know...
Just keep trying things, I guess, so.
That's what, you know, a lot of the states wanted, was what's a Minnesota brew, and that, we couldn't get any closer, so.
Anything else to jam? Get a recommendation then?
I'll recommend the approval of the liquor store operating state.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you.
What kind of issues do we have this morning?
We didn't have any issues last month, just the setup and stuff for rainier days. Snowbirds are starting to leave, so, kind of getting more seasonals, turn offs.
Uh, one thing I got, I think, and the message got passed on you, but the, the ring construction is supposed to start somewhere right around the first week in October here. So, prior to that, we're, I want you to stay in contact with LNL Construction.
You can do that.
Have their number, we'll get your number, I think it's on their quote, uh, to make sure you stick in contact with them so we get the boards removed. Uh, we didn't want to do a case for some reason, it didn't show up or something, whatever.
Yeah, and then there's a few people that are interested that Wilbur, Berta, myself, we'll get in contact with, I want some of the boards, anything after that, we'll just demo out.
Okay, how long do you think that'll take, to tear them down?
To tear them down? I could have them out in half a day if I'm just demoing them.
I got, what kind of footings are under them, is there...
Nothing.
No, no, none of them, yeah, it's not much.
They're all just, there's about a thousand screws.
Screws, yeah.
All filled screws, I don't know whether we want to take drills or drill...
Depends on what you want to save it. In the fencing above, I'd obviously, we got to split them up, because we've got wood and...
Yeah.
Whatever, whether we end up burning it or taking it on until, we probably have to netting down over the top and roll it up, sell it, do something with it, you know?
Yeah, but the demo end of it, Bob, be not bad, it's, what, what we're running, what we're going to run and do is the people that want to save some of the boards. Because that, that's obviously going to take a lot more work if you're trying to save them.
On the old side boards and you're going to take out all the inside boards?
No, it's only one board.
It's all one board?
Yeah.
So, when you do that, like I said, roll up the fencing, we'll see if someone wants to buy it, we'll just demo it, I mean, you know, we can have so much junk around, I don't see...
Right. It's, I don't even think it's, I don't think it's worth even saving.
No, that's what I'm saying, but they go with separate bins, so...
Yeah.
You can always take that to the scrapyard.
It looks pretty rotten, I was there that day.
It's already rotten.
Yeah.
Buy it by the pound or something, so.
Sure.
Anyway, so, so that's one issue. Um, actually, winter is coming, so, uh...
Yeah, we'll start probably doing hydrants shortly.
Yeah, watch your hydrants, uh, yeah, there's a few other things, but they're probably not much issues, so.
Right.
Do you think the September 14th is too early to take the boards down or is it okay to start?
Well, I think we'll let Nick Ford name that guy, so he gets an exact date, you know, if he's going to be here on the 1st, we'll, we'll start, you know, whenever.
Yeah, I could talk to Tim and John too, and you know, they can start taking the ones they want.
If they want them, they should come and take them, because otherwise, everything else is going to be demoed.
Yeah, yeah, I agree on that.
I'll get that part done the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, anything else for Nick?
Sure.
All right, I think, uh, a few things we had, but, uh...
I did talk to Dwayne Cholton too about that shouldering this morning, we were going to do it this afternoon, he was going to haul the rock over himself, but he got busy, so hopefully tomorrow we'll have that done.
Yeah, get that done. Okay, just can I ask you, over there, Jennifer was laying by her pot, of course, man these house, but over on that one corner, there's a dead tree, is that the city's or is that their tree?
Which corner?
Uh, it would be over by the park, right on...
Oh, that balsam, that's, that's theirs. Yeah. Yeah, that's been dead for a while.
If it poses a hazard to the city, you have the right to take it down, you know, it's no big deal.
I could probably bring it up to Jennifer and she would have it taken down.
We don't want to start taking down private trees or anything else, but anything that poses a hazard to the city, you know, we're not going to wait till it blows down in somebody's house or into the street, onto a car. I think you did that at Terrera with some of the willows that were bound to fall on something there, so, that's the same, but, uh... I know she asked me about, and I said, it's closed.
Fine line, but I would say no, it's theirs.
If it's willing to take it down, it's a dead tree, also get it, get rid of it if it's close to the line, who knows where these property lines are exactly, so, okay. Anything else for Nick? All right, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Nick.
Keep in touch. This is my agenda. Thank you. Okay. Well, the next order of business is just, I want to bring this up to the council. Uh, well, approximately two months ago, we had a meeting with the CM and all its top executives and their, actually, their law enforcement agent and, uh... Anna Lucavina, who was representing, uh, Senator Pogusar. And, uh, we, we posed a couple things we discussed and, and out of the conversation we had, that, uh, consideration would be given to a pedestrian bridge spanning the railroad. We brought that up, so, uh, the railroad was really in favor of it, and they actually granted, they said they'd be glad to grant a seizement, uh, for that, which would probably be necessary, because where it'd have to go, it would have to land, this is an elevator shaft, you know, housing for an elevator. It would have to land basically in that parking lot, because if we went to our property line on that side, I think we'd end up blocking that alleyway or, you know, it just wouldn't work. So, they were more than happy to grant a seizement, they, they, and they confirmed that to, to both us and the senator's aide and, and if it were more pleased, that we'd be even considering that. So, uh, with the council's permission, I'd like to proceed with looking to see if there's any grant funding available for something like that. You know, that, I believe it should follow into the American Disability Act, because obviously, you know, people can't get across that tracks and things like that, and they all know the issue that has, is we want to block each and everything else. So, um, I did have a chance to talk with Rob Eklund, who went to the Migi on that other issue, and, uh, did you make contact with him? He, he had a...
I haven't yet.
Okay, well, he said, send us, uh, just a quick email, and he would send us back, uh, listing the potential areas where there'd be grants available for something like that. Obviously, this would just have a, a switchback ladder to it and an elevator, it would be one on both sides, basically, and at the sidewalk, going over, uh, design and everything else will be looked at, things like that, so. I think, I, myself, I think it's worth pursuing to look at and see what kind of grants are available. I truly believe there's got to be something out there for them. And I guess we all seen the issues that happened, so if you pull up to their, in the middle of the winter, you know, if you're on that side, you can't even come get your mail for it.
The trains are getting longer.
Yeah, well, they're getting longer, more frequent, and, uh, in the middle of winter, if it's cold or something else, you would get, stand there for, you know, this one was almost 30 minutes today, just, just prior to this meeting, I sat there for 22, 22 minutes, I timed it, so. You know, if you're a pedestrian lady, you get across the street.
You do that, or we're going to have to start putting warming houses on.
Well, I guess, you know, we can't expect a person to walk all the way around that chapel lane.
No.
So, uh, I think railroad recognize that, we recognize that, and so I think it's worth pursuing, but with the council's permission, I'll, I'll make some inquiries into possible funding, so. I did get a, a letter of, I talked to Joe Sutherland, who's with WSN, and, uh, with Mrs. Smith and Holkey. He had did, did a drawing, if any of you guys remember that, when they were talking about the overpass of the pedestrian bridge, but that had a long ramp and they didn't have an elevator and that. But they had people in their architectural firm that, that could draw up plans and do stuff like that, so, and he gave us, uh, you know, a fee chart and stuff like that. And they also could assist in getting grants, but I think the best would be is, if we get permission, we can see what, what kind of funding's out there first, before we proceed any further. So, with that, uh, everybody, I don't think I need a motion on it, but, uh...
I'll make a recommendation, yeah, follow through with, uh, follow up on the pedestrian bridge study proposal.
Second. I got a recommendation, I can a second?
So, what are we recommending?
Just to go see if it's feasible.
To see if it's feasible, so is that meaning the, the engineer study?
Well, no, just, just start working on it, see what, what funding's available, what, you know, we know there's engineering firms that can do it, but we want to see what kind of funding's available.
Okay.
Stuff like that. Is that correct, Todd, you have recommendations?
Yeah.
Well, we need a second.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Got a recommendation, a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Uh, the next, uh, AMI Engineering Rendering for the boat ramp discussion, we did receive final, uh, we did receive, uh, in writing, the award of the grant for the, the boat ramp. Now we can proceed with some, what I call, one-third drawings for, uh, the ramp. I think that's, uh, necessary to, uh, before we have any meetings on it, to get them one-third drawings, it won't take much, but, uh, uh, we've already contacted AMI about that, but now that we get the, uh, the letter in place here, uh, we can proceed in that, and then we can set a meeting after we know what, how soon and drawings would be available. I, I don't know what that is, but we probably should get a recommendation, uh, proceed, get one-third grants or one-third drawings. Are you talking that they're going to give, give us samples of the design? Yeah, they give, one-third drawings is basically the design of what it, it looks like, but they're, they're not near a complete plan, because they, they don't show the, you know, maybe the depth of the asphalt and things like that, or they, they'll, they'll show you, uh, well, they're incomplete, they'd have to finalize, but cases of changes or anything, you don't want to put all your money into the engineering and just turn around and change them. I mean, they might have a description and a picture of the dock and the design of the dock, where it goes, and this is probably more, more of discussion than actually the design, you know, parking lot, things like that, some of that stuff, so.
And the money for that is coming over the funds?
Yeah. Yeah, that's where it comes from. It all comes over the grants, so.
So we don't need any, that's the motivation, that proceed?
No, I just, I just like, you know, that's, before we can proceed with any meetings, and then we've got to have some...
Plans.
Plans and stuff for that, so, okay. So I'll be doing that, I'll call AMI.
I've got all the stuff I want to forget.
Okay. Oh, it's just online bill paying through government office systems.
Yeah, a lot of people have been asking to pay with their credit cards, to come into the office, but we don't have a way to do it, and, and a lot of cities have, um, made available on their websites to pay online with their credit cards and, uh, e-payment.
Is that a cost to us?
Nope, no cost to us, it all relies, it all goes to the consumer, they pay a convenience fee and, and they collect the payments and then deposit it in our accounts in, um, 48-hour periods or whatever we decide to do.
Don't the credit cards charge us a fee to the city?
Not for this one.
Or they'll pass it on to the client and the people there? They're the ones using it, they're the ones that'll pay it.
Yeah, it's, they do it under convenience fee.
What's the percentage?
Uh, depending on which model we do, uh, there's a flat 295, um, fee for Model 1, and Model 2, there's a 2.5% for, um, credit cards, commercial credit cards, like Visa, MasterCard, and then a 1.5% for, uh, the debit cards.
That's trivial, but convenient for people, so.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Did we get a motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Okay. The hockey boards, I think we did discuss them already.
Yeah.
Can I add something on the hockey boards? The rec, the rec club met last night and we had, um, $7,600 that was clustered for the hockey boards already from funds that have come in from all the science donations.
Okay.
And we added $2,400 out to make it into a 10 grand to go towards the hockey boards. We also approved purchases, if we pay out how we do boards, if we just demo them, but if we had people come and they needed drills and stuff, we approved it out on, we had to go buy any drills if we could on the weekend and we had a meeting, so.
It was $400.
$400.
Okay. That, that's great, we appreciate that donation, it'll certainly help in, in the cost of that, getting the money. Again, thanks, Rec, Rainier Rec, I really don't know what this city do, I mean, it's our vote too personally, yes. This is to recommend approval of reslee, resolution 2019-07 National Rail Safety Week. We were given a letter. Recognize being at the busiest port in North America, I suppose we should recognize Rail Safety Week indicating train accidents, the train wreck.
So CNN is on board on this too?
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that sent it out.
Pardon?
CNN's the one that sent out.
Yeah.
The information.
So it's September 22nd through the 28th?
Correct.
Get a motion for that, to recognize?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second all in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Uh, to recognize Rob Eklund for his services, he was recognized by the leader Minnesota cities as, um... Um, Magister of Distinction, which is great, because he's helped us in many of our projects that we do, so we got a person in there and the other, the leader Minnesota cities recognize him, so, again, congratulations to Representative Eklund for his achievements and his hard work. Like to recognize that, so, um, beach testing results, moving on, beach testing results, we had our testing results, they, they came back real very good, uh, way above, about 600, I think it's 600% of the failure rate, so, there's, uh, they're fantastic, they said, so. Maybe something that the chamber should be recognizing too, that our beaches up there are really clean, um, very, very swimmable, I guess, so, that, that's a good thing. They thank us for monitoring that and keeping, uh, keeping up on that, so, I think next year we'll do the same thing, keep our same testing policies and, uh, hopefully we end up with same results. I think, I think that's a real tribute to the, um, you know, that Jackfish Bay system that was put in, I think we're recognizing some of that, because, you know, prior, prior to this, uh, the last few years, it's been getting better and better, so, I think that's a real testament to that, that project, and I know it's a long time coming, but I think they're just completing the final phase of it as we speak, so. Basically, if, everything up to Lake now will have public sewers, so, if anything is needed, we get better, so. I'll get Serena Rec Club up on the, on the...
Yeah, I just wanted to report, when we brought E-Cabs in, you asked me to come back to the board, to the council, after a few months, I don't know how they're doing. It's kind of complicated, it's hard to read, but I did as much as I could. If you look on the left side, I put down like the rent payments and how much we took in for pull tabs and E-tabs through the year, and then on the, on the right-hand side, the cars matched for the year, so if you look at January for '18, the rent payment was 300.
Slow down, slow down, January.
Top three row.
You have 19 or 18?
Of 18.
Yes.
And where it says payment, 309.40 is what the muni got for rent from the rec club for pull tabs.
Yeah.
And over on the right-hand side, for January, they got 637.80. So, that was a odd difference by a little bit so much, but if you go down where E-tabs start, um... start, um, I also did on the bottom left, rent for pull tabs, showing that, I, we believe that the E-taps are enhancing the sale of paper pull tabs, if you see that chart, I just, um, on the bottom left, the rent for pull tabs has gone up after E-tap started.
Yeah, on the pull tab, went up three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Correct.
And so, even though the, the-
Yeah, so, what-
Other services are in there, pull tabs are still-
Yes, and they're-
Maybe that's drawing more people in, right?
It is, the E-taps are not taking anything away from the paper pull tabs, they're actually helping that.
Well, that's what, that was our, my fear was, and, and I can see it's, it's only increased business, and so that, that's good, that's great. All right. That's lasting, anything else, Berta?
No, that's it, that's all, just wanted to report, we had a good one last month, we were over three hundred dollars on that, was our biggest month for office, so-
Okay.
Are you guys finding any Halloween thing for the rec club this year?
No, we didn't, we didn't talk about it last night, we were focusing on the boards, and we're not done.
We didn't make nothing last year.
No, we've talked about it three years, we did years ago, we could talk, three of our meetings already have over, and we'd have more than enough time to go treat street or something.
And we would have the Christmas one coming up, that would be the next one, then?
Correct, the next one that we have right now, is the Christmas event, yes.
Okay. But that said, it's open forum, open to the audience? Yes?
I was having a discussion about the street light down at the-
Pardon me?
On the street light down at Swoosh Street Dock, and I was just over to the boat launch, uh, by the, um-
Barcage.
Park headquarters, they have very interesting lights, and I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but when there is no activity around, the lights go off completely, and then they come on, but they will come on dim, and so there's three stages of lighting over there off one fixture. I went to the dark sky program at the park service, and so-
Some kind of photocell, uh, generating electricity, and is that what you're requesting, that we put something like that on there, or?
Well, I think that would be, um, a good solution to the requests from people for dark sky, and if, I have no idea, you know, we're the governor, and that, that's-
Is that a, must be an MP and L, right, is that correct?
I would say it's Minnesota-
Yes, it's a motion sensor.
Yeah. Well, have a motion sensor, but it must not, must have a photocell on it also, then, as it gets darker, or whatever.
Well, photocells purely for power, power, and that, the lighting generation is different than the photocell, and it would just basically be a motion sensor, and if there's a lot of activity, people on, maybe it breaks off, and then if there's not a lot of activity, it's down.
Well, whatever that sensor is, I'm sure they made more than one of them, so we could probably check in to see, see, and-
That would be great.
What to call, Nick, why don't we leave that up to you, just, um, Minnesota Power, see Doug King, see if, whatever they have, anyone by the, uh, park service, if it's similar, and if there's a cost involved in it, or if it's something that's different, they can install. Okay? Thanks, Tara. Anything else?
Yeah, last, uh, painting, I submitted, um, signatures from-
Yep.
Hundred and twenty-five residents of Red Hand, um, that were either against the boat launch down the river, and were requesting a public hearing, so I'm just wondering, um, how many signatures would one need to get, how many residents would have to be opposed to something before it would end?
Well, I have a little issue with that, I read your petition, and actually, there's two questions on your petition, one is opposed to the boat ramp.
Correct.
First of all, let, let, I don't know how many you have to get, I, I don't know that answer, if there's a, if there's a legal number, or non-number, so, I, I, I don't know what that question is.
Well, I could tell you, we're off the top, there's seventy-five at this time, that were opposed to the boat launch, and also on public hearing.
Okay.
And then, I believe there's another fifty that just want a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I said, there was two questions on that, so, to answer that, whether they were opposed to the boat ramp, launch, or to, uh, a meeting-
So, so how many-
There's some other issues, uh, your petition kinda encompasses both of them, so I didn't know how many actually were opposed to it, or whatever, so, uh, like I said, there is no specific number according to Cheryl, and I'm not sure, I'm not aware of that number, so, we, we intend to have that meeting, but not until we get the, uh, some drawings and a little more information for you.
I, I would really appreciate if somebody could find out what, I mean, and there are several kinds of options, and if you get people's side petition, it's gonna make a difference, so, that's why I'm asking this question, what kind of difference does it make? I mean, if you have, like, say, for example, in two thousand sixteen, I believe that there were approximately three hundred and fourteen registered voters, the population of Rainier at that time was over six hundred, well, now, three hundred, that new census, I'm not sure how that was derived, but I think it's, what, five hundred and seventy-one, or something, that's on that side, so, we would assume that there's probably fewer, uh, registered voters within our area.
Three, there's still three to seventy-five registered voters.
Pardon?
Three hundred and seventy-five registered voters on the last election.
Three seventy-five?
Well, I, I think your answer to the question is, first of all, I, I don't know that answer, and we'll, we'll maybe look into that, but to me, if, 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 if it looks like a petition says there might be a need to answer a question yourself, so depending on what the question is, what the petition is, and how many signatures that is, I mean, if one person brings in a question about some ungodly thing with two signatures on it, I don't think we're gonna waste a whole bunch of time on it, so, I think those are, to me, I don't know if there's a set number, or any particular rules on, on petitions, uh, I think they have merit, obviously, because there must be some concerns, or there wouldn't be a petition out there, so, we'll, we'll look into that, too, I, I don't know the answer, so I just-
Right, I mean, I would just think that if I were a council member, I would perhaps pay attention to whether or not our constituents support or are doing, I, I think that-
Well, I, I think we do pay attention to it, I just don't, don't know the answer to that.
I don't think they pay attention to it, so that's why I'm-
I think when we have our next open meeting on it-
Yeah.
Those people should be here, if they're concerned about it.
Well-
Well, you know, there are, there are many people, apparently, according to Facebook, that feel that they're unable to speak in public, because they feel as though they're intimidated by various people within, or outside of the community, so they're afraid to speak up, so, I mean, me, I'm not afraid of saying whatever I can, well, please, because I have no vested interest, other than being a taxpayer.
I don't think we want anybody to feel that way, the, the council's been very receptive, and I think-
I believe there's other people outside of the council in addition.
Well, I mean, to the audience, I think, and you're well aware, but I, if we've listened to anybody that's come in here, and actually, we, we encourage participation, because with that, we get ideas, we have thought, of really which way the wind's blowing in on certain situations, so, uh, the worst thing we, we wanna do is start something that we find out later, it's been a whole wasted effort, because nobody's in favor, but, so, so we do give a lot of thought to anything we proceed on, but, again, these are open meetings, and, and, and people don't, you know, and I guess we all know that, that they, they choose not to attend, and all of a sudden, something happens, and then they, they say, "Well, why didn't I do this, why didn't I..." Well, you know, the door's open, so, and again, rules are made by the people that show up, you know, and, and we all know that, so, we listen to the people come here, we listen to their concerns, so, best thing everybody can do is encourage people to come to these meetings, and then, probably wouldn't have to have any special meetings for anybody if they, they, because I don't think we'll be seeing anything different than that we haven't said already, but if more people wanna hear it, the first place they can do is come to it, and they get it firsthand, but we're willing to have a couple more meetings, I guess.
Right. Well, I mean, I, I'm asking these questions, because, you know, we basically stopped our petition driving, it was about too hot, and we were too busy, so, I mean, we could continue to get more signatures, so that's why I'm interested in the number of signatures that would need to be had to make a difference.
I, I don't know that number, anyway. So, anything else? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second. You got a motion, second all favor?
Aye.
Oppose, so carry.
Thank you.